Today is Monday, January the 14th, and the McDowell County Board of Commissioners are in session. We would like to welcome everyone to the boardroom tonight. And as always, we begin every meeting with a prayer and the pledge. So if you'd be so kind as to stand at this time, and we'll have Commissioner McPeters listen to prayer, and then Commissioner Brown will listen to pledge.
Let's pray. Gracious heaven, Father, Lord God, we thank you for this day that you've given us. Father, we thank you for this time that we've got to be able to sit here and meet and conduct the business of the people of the county. Father, we pray that you forgive us of our sins and our shortcomings where we fail you. God has always put you first, dear God, in our county business, our personal lives. Thank you for saving us, Lord, and for dying upon a cross just over the hells deserving sinners like us. Pray that you bless this country, watch over and protect the ones, Lord, that are military, dear God. We pray for them tonight, pray for their families. God, we pray for our county. We pray we do the business of the people, God, in what's right. In your name we do pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Let's pray. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks so much. At this time, gentlemen, we have the minutes before you, and you've had an opportunity to review those. What's the pleasure of the board asserting approval of the minutes we have in our package?
We approve.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, lightside? Madam President, did you get an accurate first and second?
Barry did make both of them.
I have Barry, Commissioner McPeters has motion, and Vice Chairman Brown has a second.
Okay. Duly noted for the record, they both spoke at the same time. Let's go to the next item on the agenda. That will be the approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda by staff and/or commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I did note just before the meeting, we've got the slightly incorrect time on the Transit Department public hearing, item A, and that needs to be at 5:15. So the suggestion might be to start with old business and then work our way towards that.
Okay, any other additions or deletions? There being none, what's the pleasure of the board asserting approval of tonight's agenda with the change as mentioned?
We approve.
Second.
Discussion on favor, say aye. Any opposed, lightside? Okay, let's go ahead and move to our first item under old business. This will be an update on the new Old Fort Elementary project, and we're all excited. This board has backed the school board 100% since the inception of the process began, and we're looking forward to that new school. So Mr. Wood, can you lead us out, sir?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So again, where we stand in the process, I believe November 29th, this board held a public hearing to receive comment on the proposed financing of a portion of that project. It's a $20 million project. $15 million had been secured through a grant application for the Needs-Based Capital Program run through the Department of Public Instruction, with the county required to come up with the 1/4% match. And so, again, this board has indicated that support. You had the hearing on the 29th of November. At that time, you selected First Bank to do that financing. Since then, we've been working with the lender, with the county attorney, with the school board attorney on the loan documents. And more importantly, on January 8th, the North Carolina Local Government Commission considered the request for financing. So last year, we had a request before the board, and there was more interaction, the commission, there was interaction between staff and that commission about our finances, about the project. And I won't say it was a grilling, but it was definitely an intense back and forth. This project, thankfully, was on the consent agenda. They grilled another unit of government for about an hour, which we listened to in great detail. And then our item, they moved on to consent agenda of about 10 or 15 items, and it was approved unanimously by the commission. And so, we do have the permission of the state to borrow the money. Again, the school board attorney, the county attorney, and the bank are still working on the loan documents. We're planning to close on the loan by the end of this month. And all of this has been, and we've been communicating this with the school board, staff, superintendent, and finance officer. Believe there will be a conditional approval of the construction contract tonight by the school board. So the project is proceeding. We're doing what we can to support on different aspects of that project, but there's definitely a lot of action behind the scenes to get the funding approved. I'll leave out any details.
Okay, the board's excited to partner with the school board, and this is all about education and our kids, and a new modern school building for that community's going to do wonders for their morale. So we're excited about it, and let's move to the next item then. Any comments, questions for staff?
I will mention the superintendent did indicate there will be a formal groundbreaking within the next couple of weeks, and you definitely will be invited to that. So we'll try to get the date and time scheduled.
Okay, sounds great. Let's go down and be under old business. This will be a water project update on Stacy Hill Road. Mr. Wood, can you go right ahead, sir?
Yes, sir. So this is a project we've been working on. Construction started maybe about five or six months ago. The contractor is wrapping up the project. They're really down to the last several hundred yards of construction. And after they complete the pipe installation there on Stacy Hill, there will be the master meter relocation. So again, for those listening and the board's sake, the current master meter where the city system ends, and ours begins, is at the intersection of US 70 and North Carolina 126. That will be relocated closer to Stacy Hill Road. We've talked about an easement acquisition prior meeting. So that will be the last part of the project. Take about a week or so to do that. As part of that process, you know, that's a technical aspect and construction, there is a administrative process of about nine or 10 customers coming over from the city, over to the county. So there is a process that we will work with city staff to make that as seamless as we can with those customers. So we're working out a joint letter with the city. It's a different, I think a different billing software than they have, but we'll have to do a final reading, the city will, we'll have to do an initial reading for us, but we'll make it as seamless as possible. Our staff has already been communicating with theirs to bring them over. So that probably will be about a month or so away, and then that project will be complete.
Okay. And we do appreciate the city being willing to move the master meter. That was a big deal.
Yes, sir, very much.
Big deal. Okay, comments, questions by staff? There being none, let's move to the next item under old business, item C. This is the Phase 3 Greenway update. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. So this project has been a long time coming, I guess, understatement. For recollection purposes, this is primarily located on county property off of Old Greenlee Road, I guess west of the existing Greenway sections. The board had approved the, approves the construction contract with Baker Grading of Old Fort at a prior meeting, and we've been working ever since with the contract execution and so forth. But Baker, you may recall, for those who've been on the board a while, they did the Greenway around the Spaulding Road area and did a wonderful job. So we look forward to a great project. Staff will meet with the contractor and engineer this Thursday for the pre-construction meeting, and the hope is that that project will at least start staging by the end of this month. And again, that will be another project where maybe early February at this point, we'll have a groundbreaking for the board, and Trail Association, city has participated in the funding, so I could be invited as well, but another great groundbreaking project. And I believe the construction timeframe was about six to eight months on that. So maybe by the summer, we'll have folks walking on the trail out there.
Okay. Ashley, bring the board up to date, our meeting with the city, the utility committee, and the new committee that's going to be formed, or is in the process of having.
Right. So there's been a recent discussion between the city, the county, and the Trails Association. And again, for those that aren't familiar, I'll miss be surprised, but the McDowell Trails Association is a nonprofit that was established to support the establishment of greenways, trails, blueways, et cetera, in the county. And so they do a tremendous amount of fundraising, and when they're able, they do physical labor for different projects, and have assisted county trails, especially Point Lookout Trail and others in the past. But they had mentioned to city and county leadership that they want to have a greater role in support. And so there was a recent meeting, and we're working out some of the details to bring back to at a, hopefully, the February meeting, to essentially have, sort of like the city and county do on a monthly basis, get together and talk about items of mutual interest. Maybe a quarterly meeting with the Trails Association to talk about.
And the city, too.
And the city.
Three partners.
With the three partners, talk about trail projects that are existing, and how, you know, each other can support those existing projects, but also talk about ones that are short-term development, and also talk about long-term planning for items like the Final Forest State Trail that this board has endorsed. So staff, city and county have worked on some preliminary inter-local agreements and sort of things, and will share that with you very shortly, and hopefully have that on the agenda next month. But a very promising new partnership. And there has been, and sort of related, maybe not with the city's involvement, Commissioner McPeters said, I called about Point Lookout Trail, and that is a project that we have had a supporting role for about 10 years. And there's, had been a maintenance group that have been meeting monthly or quarterly there, and once the federal shutdown is over, our goal is to get that group reactivated, since the Forest Service was integral in that, in that group. So that is something that we've talked to Trails Association, again, about Forest Service and others about not dropping any balls there.
Okay. We've got about two minutes before our public hearing begins. Mr. Wood, can we go to administrative items, A?
Sure. The link may be broken on that. So that is on.
We don't, I don't have it in mind either.
It's there. I think the link broke.
Scroll through. Page 28.
28.
Maybe. Nope.
Take three minutes to get there.
Yeah, do that.
Okay, page 33.
Yep.
Got that link fixed. Is where this will start off, and while you're getting there, I can read some of the items. There are about three or four. The first item.
Mr. Wood, and I hate to interrupt you right there, sir. We've been using our time up getting there and finding it, so let's move. Let's go ahead, we'll save that for, that's too much fun to have right now, move on down and move back up on the agenda. At this time, let's go ahead and move to our first item on our appointment schedule. This is item A, and we have Mr. Conley with us today. He's our public transit coordinator, director, biggest Dallas Cowboy fan in the county. He wants me to always say that when he comes to the boardroom. And so he's, at this time, I will declare the board in a public hearing setting. Mr. Conley, you go ahead and bring your information to the board, and then we'll give people the opportunity to comment, okay?
All right, thank you. Good evening. I come before you seeking permission to apply for state and federal transportation grants. The grants that we'll be applying for is the 5310 and 5311 grant. The 5311 admin grant will include various items such as salaries for administrative staff, rent, and other administrative items, which is required a 15% local match. And then in that line, we'll be looking at $184,373 with a local match of $27,657 at 15%. The 5310 capital grant will be used, again, for vehicle replacement. This grant is competitive, and right now, our vehicles are still O-H, so we'll be still replacing. We'll be replacing five vans this grant cycle, and it will require a 10% match as well, and we'll be looking at, on that line, we'll be looking at $277,915 with a local match of The 5311 operations grant, it will cover camera installation system on our vans. This is a state requirement that all our vans have a security surveillance camera on them for various reasons. The vans that we have now, they don't have to have the camera systems in them because they're grandfathered in, but we'll soon be replacing all of them. So this will be a 50% match, local and federal, which is $17,738 combined, but 50% of that is $8,869 with the approval of this resolution, and I'll like to begin applying for these funds.
Okay. Mr. Wood, anything you'd add to that, sir?
No, sir. It's kind of unusual, you know, we're not really started our budget process yet, but the state requires that we apply now essentially for what's to come in the next fiscal year. Never hurts to be ahead of the game, I guess.
Okay. Board members, any comments before we go to the, those present?
Total, total cost of the county will be about, what, $63, $64,000?
$64,318.
It's a good day, Antonio, we spent $64,000 to get $480,000, well, combined.
We've approved the request.
We go to the public. We can't take action, public. Comments? Other comments by board members? There being none, we'll start on this side of the room. If you wish to speak concerning the information you've heard tonight, just raise your hand, state your name, and you're more than welcome, we'll hear you gladly, okay? So anybody on the first row, second row, third row, first row, second row? Mr. Baker, go ahead, sir.
I missed that part.
This for the transit, the transit system to apply for federal and state grants.
And that's going to run through the city?
Yes.
Is it just, just for city, or do you go outside of the city?
Oh, it's city, for the whole county. We also take clients out of county, too, for our appointments.
Okay.
Good question. We're trying, you know, the county is working, and we believe in being fiscally responsible, and we're working with our, our new department. This is a new department that was established last year, right, Mr. Conley, sir? And we're working on some public transit routes where people can utilize those, and they've got those up and running. And so, Mr. Conley and his staff's doing a good job, and we're taking baby steps moving forward with public transit. There's no need to go in over our heads and spend a ton of money that, and then you find all the mistakes. We're starting small and working our way up, and so our staff's doing a great job. Any other comments? Mr. Baker?
I didn't introduce myself, Brad and Baker.
Course got that on the record, right? Good. All right. Do you hear a motion to go to public hearing now?
Some move.
Motion of second.
Second.
Second discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, lightside? Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? Mr. Brown?
I make the motion to approve the request.
Okay, got a motion?
Second.
Second discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, lightside? Okay, Mr. Conley?
Let's have a good one. And Dallas loss.
Go Patriots. Patriots all the way now, I'm with Patriots now. Of course, the Steelers didn't make it that far, did they, y'all? I don't need to bring that up, though, do I? All right, let's move to our next item. We have 5:15 duly advertised, the audit presentation. So at this time, we have April Westmoreland with Johnson Prices Sprinkle here. They conduct the yearly audit for McDowell County. Been doing it for how many years, April?
30 plus.
30 plus.
I've been working 20, so I'm not sure.
And they are really, they are really detailed, and they make sure that county is operating by every law out there, correct?
Yes.
And they do get, so at this time.
That would be material.
Material facts, that's right. So at this time, April, go ahead, and the floor is yours.
Okay.
And we're here, and we've got, we've got copied on the information you've got there.
You going to be working off of your paper copy? I don't know if you've got electronic copy as well. I'll reference page numbers on the paper copy. Once again, my name is April Westmoreland with Johnson Prices Sprinkle. I'm the manager of this audit, and we like to thank the county once again for allowing us to do your audit, and thankful to Ashley and Allison and her staff for all their help and dedication to get through the audit process. This audit report, if you've looked, is 151 pages. Every year, it seems to grow a little bit. We take some stuff away, and then they add a new standard. So we're still sitting at 151 pages, and obviously, we won't go through the whole thing. Just want to hit a few highlights and point out a few things, you know, that you can look at for future reference. If you look, at the third page is your table of contents, and this just kind of walks you through your financials, your audit report, you've got management's discussion and analysis, your basic financial statements. The next page, you go on to required supplemental information. You've got individual fund to financial statements for each project and various funds, and you can see the length of that. If you go on to the next page, you can see how many capital projects the county had going on or were in process at, at June 30th, 2018. And then go on, you've got compliance section, which the compliance section is a real involved process, but it's the shortest part of, of your audit report, which is, which is interesting. On page, pages one through three is your independent audits report, auditors report, and that's just tells you what management's responsibility is, what our responsibility as your auditors are, and then goes on to page two to give an opinion. And the short of that is that an unmodified opinion was issued, which is the desired result of a financial statement audit. Just want to hit a few highlights of the statements. Pages 16, and then page 18, excuse me, page 16 through 17, and page 18, you can see what your major funds were, and obviously, general fund is always a major fund, and you can see the assets and liabilities on the modified accrual basis, and then it gives you the components of your fund balance. So the fund balance at the end of fiscal year 2018 was 11.7 million. And I'll have you quickly look at the other supplemental handout that I had that's separate from your financial statement. The fund balance is a percentage of expenditures. It's got five years' worth of trend information. And that's where that 11.7 million comes into play, and then you can see the components on the 2018 column, that you had 7.7 million that was available for appropriation, which was down from the 9.6 million. And you can see the end result is your fund balance percentage went from 22.31% to right under 18%. And that's given, if you look above at the transfers, what was paid out, or what projects the board decided to put money towards, and the largest one being the courthouse renovation project, and then the Stacy Hill project. While expenditures remained comparable at the 43.4 million level, it was your available for appropriation and unassigned balance that went down.
And Mr. Wood, and that's just due to the courthouse project, correct?
Right. Those, those projects, Ms. Westmoreland mentioned, the courthouse and Stacy Hill, and the Greenway extensions on there. Greenway, for example, had been put aside over a number of years, and then was just dropped into a project fund at the end of last year. So it's, it's not that we're appropriating money for that, that was reserved money in that instance.
Well, from 14 to 19, basically, or 18, there's been a decrease in only $1.2 million. And there's been a lot of stuff that's been happening lately. We've got a lot of projects, as April said, that the county's undertaken.
So I'm sure that number is not a surprise, because obviously, the board, in approving all these expenditures and transfers, I always like to think when we present the audit, I know it's six months out until your next year, but these numbers shouldn't be a surprise to you, and if they are, then that would be a totally different conversation we'd be And then I just wanted to point out, there's more detail, I know the general fund is the main operating fund, so if you look at pages 87 through 97 in this huge report, you'll see the general fund, you know, where it details out the revenue sources and then expenditures by function and department, and it gives you the final budget, so you can see if there were any shortages, any variances, and there were not, everything was, and I can say that for all funds, there was not any negative variances. So everything was properly budgeted, including like self-insurance fund, which just speaks to the, your staff and the diligent effort they made to estimate and stay on top of that, you know, and get budget amendments in by June 30th. And then I just wanted to hit real fast on the compliance section, which is, which starts on page 137. You actually have three reports in there. Page 137 through 138 is a report related to internal control of our financial reporting and on compliance. We often refer to this as the yellow book report, excuse me, and identifies no findings in there. And then the next two, compliance report, you've got your report over major federal program, programs, and the report over major state programs. This provides opinion on the county's compliance in all material specs related to compliance requirements over federal and state programs, and we issued unmodified opinions on all three of these reports, which is the desired outcome of the audit. And then if you'll look at pages 143 through 144, this just kind of gives you a summary of the whole audit. As you can see, there was not anything, whether it be the financial statement section, federal awards section, or the state awards section on the next page, there were no significant deficiencies or findings identified. And I like to comment that, that just speaks to your staff. Lot went on this year, a lot of activity, a lot of projects, and like I said, there was no budget variances. All the findings, any that were noted in the past have been resolved and rectified. So I'd like to thank Allison for that. And then when we did do the compliance work, which you can see on page, pages 143 and 144, that lists out the programs that we had to audit at DSS. That included Medicaid, TANF, foster care and adoption, and then we had public school building fund, lottery proceeds for state, and then you had your foster care and adoption, as well as Medicaid state appropriations. So we looked at all three, or excuse me, all of those programs on both of those pages, and we did not have any findings to report. And for you, for you that have been, heard this presentation before, a lot of times, we don't audit as many major programs. Last year, it was just Medicaid. Well, they changed the requirement on the auditors as far as what we look at, the state trying to even that out where more programs are being touched. So as a result, like foster care and adoption, and even. So as a result, like foster care and adoption and even TANF, we had not looked in that, in those programs in about 10 years. The state obviously looks at them, but us as single auditors had not come in and done auditing on those. So I think that just speaks a lot to the good things and the good works that are going on here at the county and at DSS.
April, we would concur with your statement right there. Allison does an excellent job and her staff and our board is very, very well pleased with the job they do. And is this, how many years has it been since we've had an unmodified opinion on the whole audit? Can you, that's probably, has that ever happened?
I don't think it's happened in my 20 years. There always seemed to be maybe something that-
Something minor, but there was always something there. So, and how long do you, for everybody present who's watching, just real quickly, how long does it take to do the audit of the county and the programs you have to?
I know it's about, with all the staff, it's about 600 plus, give or take hours, man hours, so to speak. And we come in normally July and August and then come back normally into September, early October and on site for a good six weeks, probably four to six. And then we pull out and then there's still follow-up. And then we spend several weeks at DSS. So it's kind of a back and forth, you know. We always like to say it's a puzzle, a lot of different pieces that we pull together and to make it work out. And at the end, like I said, we're happy to report that everything checked out and we had nothing that we needed to report. There was two other documents that I had passed out earlier. One is just a management letter and these are just, just a couple of things. Like I said, we did not have anything that elevated to a finding at Social Services, but we always like to just communicate that we had a couple of things that we saw that are just items to, for strengthening internal control and operating efficiency. And those items have been communicated with Lisa at Social Services. And then the other document, this just is our standard document that we have to communicate these items to the governing, those charged with governance, which is this board. And it relates to journal entries, any disagreements with management, which there were none, estimates that are in your financial statements, just several different components. And so I just encourage you to read that. And I won't, I won't spend time going through that at this point. It's a standard letter that we are required to issue every year. So that was all that I had planned to cover. So any statement pages, fund statements you want to look at or talk about, we can. Otherwise, thank you once again for allowing us to do your audit. We value our relationship with you.
Thanks so much. Ashley, anything you do have, sir?
Just quickly, I know we've got other things to talk about, but I mentioned the LGC conference call Allison and I were on. The, the unit that was before us on the agenda, they, that commission spent an hour on that one town. And they had so many issues going on in that, in that town. It's nice to, to come back and say, wow, and forgive, you know, the judgment there, but we're doing such a better job than they are. We all have issues, but this helps tremendously having a clean audit for that Old Four project, for example. If there are all kinds of findings of misappropriation of funds or poor management or whatever, that puts borrowing in trouble, so, in danger. So this is, having a clean audit, it shows how hard Allison works and her staff and also the other department heads, whether it's, you know, DSS or Transit or whoever else. There's a culture of responsibility for your department and making sure we're doing a good job. So it's very important for a lot of reasons.
Team effort.
Yes, sir.
Okay, action that is requested tonight is the approval of the 2017-18 independent auditors report. Is that correct, Mr. Woodin?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'm going to approve the audit report.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye and opposed light side. Okay, April, thanks so much. We appreciate the work y'all do, very in-depth. At this time, let's move to our next item on our appointment schedule. And this is concerning a no-wake zone on Lake James. So at this time, I will declare the board in a public hearing setting pursuant to the general statutes, which are referenced in the minutes, in the, in our documents. Mr. Woodin, go ahead, sir, and lead us out. And then we'll go take a comment on the information that is said here tonight.
Yes, sir. So this was a, a public hearing scheduled, request the board last month. This is a process that is essentially governed by rules put forth by the Wildlife Resources Commission, the State Wildlife Resources Commission. And again, this is related to establishing, in this case, a 50-yard no-wake zone in a certain area off of Old Wildlife Club subdivision. And you have a map in your packet where that is located. Several of you have seen the site firsthand and talked to others involved with it, enforcement officers, et cetera. But this is an opportunity, again, for public to speak about it. After the hearing, it is, is board's prerogative to consider the public comment and then request the rulemaking from the commission or to not. So that's your, your choices, the local governing authority.
Okay. We'll go ahead and take comments from people present tonight. So we'll start on this side. Do we have anyone here that has wished to speak concerning the no-wake buoy on Lake James? I'll start on the front row. Yes, ma'am, just state your name for the record and we'll hear you gladly, okay?
My name's Lynn Watson. I live at 54 Scream Child Drive. I was the person who initiated this process. I did reach out to Mr. Woodin in July and asked how one went about getting this area in question evaluated. They directed me to Wildlife Resources. They were extremely helpful. They were out within three weeks. They did an evaluation. They, it was Officer Wilson, who's very familiar, patrols the lake. We actually happened to be on our dock the day he came out to evaluate. He had some questions for us. It was a Sunday. He did a lot of measuring. He did his thing. He said goodbye. Then the report was sent on. I believe it got back to Mr. Woodin later in August. When I followed up in October, I was able to get a copy of the report from Wildlife Resources. And Mr. Woodin said it was on the agenda for October, or for November, rather. October puts it on for November. So I'm just following up with everything I said, which Officer Wilson's report actually was stronger than I expected. He gave the evaluation of traffic as a nine out of 10 in the area in question, which has a blind corner, so to speak, around a peninsula. And what's on the shoreline is a protected fish habitat, as well as dock. And across the lake is Camp Lake James. So it's a congested area, which was our concern. And people coming don't see around the corner. So if there's fishermen, which we've watched happen, if there's fishermen fishing in that fish habitat area, they've been nearly swamped by boats cutting that corner so closely. And they can't see who's around the bend. So I just want to reiterate, you know, my concerns, which Officer Wilson supported really strongly. He gave it a nine out of 10 for the probability that there would be an incident or accident, which is scary to think that we'd watch it happen and say, gosh, we knew that was going to happen. So I appreciate being directed on how to follow through with the process. I appreciate the timely manner in which Wildlife Resources came out. And hopefully, tonight you guys can proceed, which seems that you have to accept or approve their findings, is the way it was explained to me. And then it goes back to Wildlife Resources and they have a process. So I thank you for your time. I thank you for the people who came out. It is our dock, our shared dock, that is the one that protrudes the farthest. And that's where they based all their measurements from. So I appreciate the fact that you came out at the request of citizens and took a look at it. So thank you.
Thank you. Lynn, anybody else on that same row wish to speak? Okay, let's move to the third row. I see a hand up. Just state your name there.
Hi, my name's Ellen Cotner. I spoke at the first public hearing. I live at 26 Scream Child Drive. After that hearing, I, I took a look at Officer Wilson's report. Not only did he rate it a nine out of 10 for congestion, but he rated it a nine out of 10 that an incident will occur. He says there are navigational hazards. There's obstructions where you cannot see and people end up cutting that corner. I'm the one whose six-year-old granddaughter got knocked off the dock because a boat came within 15 yards, 15 feet, actually, 15 feet of our dock. And we had a flotation device on her, thankfully, but it could have ended very badly. Like Lynn, who is my neighbor, we have watched the fishermen trolling down there. And they troll around the beach, they troll around the docks. And they cannot see when they pull out, just like when we're trying to get in and out of our slip. You know, trying to back a boat out of your slip when you get someone coming 15 feet off your dock. It's very dangerous. And it is a public safety hazard. And that's the way Officer Wilson wrote it up. He said not only was there obstructions in the navigational area, but the other thing that he wrote in the report was that, that the obstructed vision is approximately 112 yards from the first dock coming from the north to the blind corner. And in that obstruction vision zone, if you will, are the docks of the, the five people that literally will be impacted by this. So it's, it's the Fisher's dock, it's our dock, it's the Watson's and Elmar's dock, and it's the Lock's dock. Now, Mr. Fisher, who couldn't be here tonight, got so frustrated and had so many close calls that he literally bought another lot and moved his dock, his original dock, down around the corner because he could not let his kids swim off the dock. I'm concerned for the safety of my grandchildren. I am concerned for the safety of the recreational fishermen. And as I said at the last public hearing, it's not a matter of if an incident is going to occur, it's a matter of when. That's it.
Okay. Ellen, thank you so much. Anybody else on this side wish to speak? Okay, to this side, anybody on the left side? Go ahead, Ellen.
I'm here representing sportsmen, the fishing, the recreational fishing. We are very sympathetic to-
State your name.
David Edwards, sorry. Very sympathetic to their cause. And I may be misunderstanding the area. I would like to see a picture. Can I see a picture of the map? What, I'm going to say this, we oppose any no-wake zones in the main channel. We totally agree with narrow, narrow passages, the, you know, the coves. We're talking about the main channel is what we're talking about, is like Canal Bridge. We understand Canal Bridge being no-wake because it is a choke-down point in the lake. Other narrow passages. I would ask you to, I would suggest, if you look at some other lakes we fish, like Lake Norman, on Lake Norman, they have a rule, there's no, there have any, there should be, there's a, there's a law on Lake Norman, no-wake within 50 yards of any dock. If, if anything was going to be looked at that, you know, would look at it in that. I am very sympathetic there. I'm all about safety. We want to be safe. We want to be safe as fishermen. We have a, a group of boats now that is, is being very dangerous to us as fishermen, to homeowners, docks on the lake. They have bladders in their, in their boats. They're called wake boats, have bladders in their boats that sink the boats at literally four or five foot, that make four or five foot waves. That's, that's what's causing the issues.
It's that and coming too close to the dock.
Exactly.
They, they do not respect any distance for that.
And, and I understand. I do understand their frustration on the weekends. You know, we fish Tuesday night trail, 50, 60 boats. We fish a Friday night trail, 30, 40 boats. There is, you know, the, the sportsmen bring a lot of revenue to the county. There's going to be, like in March, there'll be two tournaments that'll have, one tournament will have 250-plus boats on it this year in March. One, another tournament will have another 50, 60-plus boats, back-to-back Saturdays. We're, we're just saying we, we oppose. And like I said, I'm speaking for not just myself, but several hundred sportsmen. We are, again, sympathetic to the cause. And like I said, I would like to see, I'm maybe, I'm not understanding where we're at because I'm trying to think of a-
It's directly across from Camp Lake James.
Okay, I, I understand.
There's a, there's, there's a bend in the lake.
Right.
Right, if you're coming from Bear Creek-
Yeah, Bear, okay.
And you're heading towards Camp Lake James. So before you get to Camp Lake James, probably 50 yards before that, there's a bend in the water.
Right.
And boats, some-
Right.
-tend to hug that shoreline and cut that corner extremely close. And what's along the shoreline is a protected fish habitat that-
Right.
You know, we couldn't do, you know, so, and that's good because that's good. The fish, that's why we all live there. And honestly, it's a state law, to my knowledge, that you're not supposed to operate a boat within, I believe, it's 50 yards of a, of a, like a dock, of a permanent structure. Unfortunately, as we all know, not everyone adheres to that. But that peninsula, it's the blindness of it.
Right.
Because he's only talking about extending it 26 yards from the shore.
Right.
So he's not cutting into the main channel.
That's the misunderstanding we have. I mean, if, if they just want to extend it off the shore so that there's no wake through there, but actually through the main channel.
No, it's really, it's, it's as it, as it bends.
Then we have no problem with that, as long as it, as long as it's not a no-wake-
You want to read that. This is his report, which I think you guys have.
Right.
He's just trying to get the people cutting that corner-
Right.
-because it is blind. There's a fairly low-hanging tree, plus that actual land formation is a peninsula. And you can't see, you know, around it.
Again, as long as it's not, you know, if they're extending it off a point-
I wouldn't call it anywhere near a main channel. I mean, I understand what you're saying, main channel, the boats have to go somewhere.
Right, they're, you know, it's, the, the lake is fairly wide right there. There's plenty of room to scoot over. As long as the, the no-wake buoy is out and they have to no-wake in between that buoy and the bank-
Yes.
As long, right.
That's what he's talking about. And he's only putting that one there. He's not like going across the lake and coming-
That's just like going around any point, a shallow point or anything. There's no-wake buoys or hazardous buoys, am I right? Am I speaking? And, and just like in the narrow coves, that's just common sense. We have no issues or no problems as sportsmen. And as the, the guys that's fishing the tournaments and stuff, we have no issues as long as, you know, it's, we was concerned that it was going to be another place we'd have to stop and idle through for a long period of time.
Actually, section four of his report says, if approved, will the no-wake zone extend into a designated channel? And the answer is no. Says the distance, what is the total distance the boater, boaters will have to travel at no-wake speed? He said this no-wake zone should have no impact on boaters who stay within the main designated channel of the lake. However, for boaters coming from the shoreline along Old Wildlife Club in this proposed no-wake zone, the travel distance would be only 50 yards and the estimated time would be approximately one minute. And the issue is that, I'd be very clear, it is not the recreational fishermen.
I understand.
It is the deep haul, weekenders that come in there and fly down there.
I think we're more allies than, than on opposite sides, although we're sitting on the opposite sides of the room. I think that, I mean, I've seen fishermen get nearly swamped because of the way a boat cuts. He's casting this way and boom. I mean, they give the coordinates, but I don't know how, if that's-
What it is, the commissioners, you know, we, we go through the public hearing and you got everybody to speak. And then, you know, we go ahead and start talking there. One thing, as they're looking at that, one thing that we're concerned about is the safety.
Yes.
The safety I'm concerned about is, I don't, the recreational fishermen, I don't, I don't want to see them have to troll a quarter of a mile to get to where they need to go. And that's, that's, that's my concern. You know, when I got the email initially, and I read the, the report and the information, I responded back to, I think it might have been-
It was me.
Yeah, you.
Ellen.
Yeah, you, okay. Y'all sound a little like. But anyway, I responded back to you saying I'm all for that. Then I started talking to recreational fishermen. Because look, I want to make sure that I get all points in the discussion. And I talked to what I would say is a hardcore recreational troll up to the dock fisherman. Then I talked to what I would consider a lifetime guy that's, that's used to the lake, that lives right on the lake for- that lives right on the lake for recreational purposes. Then I talked to what I would call a moderate to liberal, who I would have thought said, no way should you ever go against putting the no-wake buoys on there, and he said he's for it, because the concerns of going out into the main channel. I will never vote to approve a no-wake buoy in a main channel right there, because these guys, it's long enough, it's not like in your car, going in your vehicle, of course, you're around the lake, you're like this anyway, getting where you're going is not gonna be as quick, but I wanna make sure that everybody, and the board does, our board does, our board wants, we're gonna be so sensitive to the safety concerns, you know, the use and access of the waters, the buyers who buy homes and have docks there, the recreational fishermen who want to bass fish in tournaments. We don't wanna see a certain group try to restrict it as individuals to other people who want to use it who don't own property on the lake. You know, y'all see where we're coming from? And that's some of the factors that we look at as we're going forward.
And again, this is, I'd be very clear with you, this is not the fishermen. They troll it in around the docks, they troll in and around the beach, they troll it in around the little fish habitat, and there's never been an issue.
It is, it affects, it affects those fishermen, if you put that no-wake buoy there.
In the main channel.
Well, anything that shrinks main channel affects everybody, every voter, because then we're all in the same little space with the kayakers, and so I think we'd all say we would hesitate to shrink the main channel because the act, the numbers of people don't change, and then you've just pushed everybody into much, into a very narrow space, and not everyone exercises good judgment or common sense, and...
And I think too, you know, you mentioned, you were citing the wildlife report. I think the wildlife needs to be more proactive. If they've got issues and they're writing reports stating that's a high-safety area, how often do you see a wildlife boat down there?
Oh, we...
Okay. You see them a lot then?
All weekends.
All right.
And they are, and they're, they're very visible, along with the sheriff's department, they're very visible, and we watch them go up and down sometimes really quickly, and you think, wow, something must be happening over there. But no, they're, they're a very large presence.
So are they not stopping these people that are causing the problem?
Well, I've never been stopped, but I have a voting license and follow the rules, and so I haven't seen them stop in front of us.
But he's talking about speeders, these people you got cross.
You know, I mean, I can't tell you if they've been cited for speeding. I do know at the first public hearing, when, when I left, the deputy who was here met me in the hallway and asked me where on the lake it was because he patrolled the lake. And I said, well, it's across from Camp Lake James. And he goes, oh yeah, he goes, I've stopped several boaters there for coming too close to the docks.
And they have, I've seen them.
Yeah.
Like I said, the only thing we was concerned with was, was that whole big width right there being a no-wake zone.
I think the zone is a total of 50 yards, yeah.
That's what they call it.
Yes.
So the recreational fishermen are okay with that makes you hurt that?
Yeah, as long as it's between, you know, that and the bank, we do that all the time anyway. I mean, we, there's points all, all over down there that you can't cut. You can, but you won't have a boat left in your boat.
I was gonna say, you guys can't because you have common sense, lots of silly people.
Yeah. And like I said, it's, she's just like, she said, it's not fishermen anyway that's causing the troubles to some new wake boats. And I understand everybody has a right to buy what kind of boat they want, but it's four- and five-foot waves is getting a little bit...
Not everybody can fish bass fish, yeah. Some of them have to ride those things up there for quick. Okay, is there anybody on this side wishes comment? Okay. There are being, now, at this time now, we're going out of public comment, so the board's gonna be discussing the matter now, okay? So I do hear a motion to go out, motion to have second, second discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, okay, gentlemen. You had lots of good input there from people affected fishermen, recreational fishermen, homeowners, and so what's your opinion? I'm open to entertain motions and discussion.
Let me say before we go too far, I did go out and view the area, and it's my understanding that this no-wake zone would only be in front of these docks and does not hinder the main channel. There's room enough to satisfy everybody, I think. But I'm like Chairman Walker, I don't wanna get in a situation where we're hindering other people that use the lake, and all of us know there is no speed limit on the lake, but there is some common sense that needs to be used sometimes. I used to patrol the lake when I worked with the sheriff's office in the summertime almost every day, so I know what you're up against. But I think there's room down there to satisfy everybody.
Okay. Thank you, Lynn. Tony.
You know, I needed to hear from these guys and hear what they said on it, you know, for as long as I can remember, and I'm getting to be pretty old, but as long as I can remember, you know, the local people have enjoyed the fishing and the recreation on the lake, and I would never vote for anything that would damper their right to use the lake, you know, we, and I think what you're asking here today, you know, and we have had situations in the past where people that we have, you know, put the no-wake zone up and, or the buoy up, and then the property owner thinks that they own the water from their, their land too, that it's still accessible to the sportsmen, to the fishermen, and so you cannot limit them on their use on that. So in between the land and the buoy, so in that regard, you know, I'm okay with it. I just wanna always respect our fishermen and our sportsmen and take care of them, and I certainly know what you're talking about, about the big wakes. I've been on the lake before fishing myself and, and had some of these guys come by with those wake jumpers, and they'll wash you up.
I think that's probably the county manager, y'all. You got any comments direct to him? I think he does on the weekends.
No, not me. But that's all I've got.
Okay.
You know, initially, you know, coming in tonight, I wasn't, you know, and I Google mapped, I did not go out there, and I thought it's further out into the channel than what it really was. And hearing from David, hearing from y'all, it's not gonna be that far out. So it kinda changes the complexity. Even tonight, when I came in, I was totally against it, but I think hearing from them and them realizing, maybe it's not quite as far out. I talked to someone today, pretty big fisherman here, and he was, we were discussing about the boats, and he said, you know, there are a couple of lakes that's coming, I don't say outlawing the wake boats, but it may be something we have to look at, or a future board down the road somewhere for constantly having issues, that they may have to take, take further measures, not the fishing boats, but those recreational boats, and I hate to say that, because I remember races down around Canal Bridge when I was a kid, I mean, they had opened wide open through the Canal Bridge, and we loved that. But those boats were about as thick as this, and they weren't the little bitty things that's causing the problem. He even brought up the issue, once you idle down, what creates a lot of those wakes is when your boat slows down. It's not the initial going through, it's when you idle down, it causes those wakes. So, you know, but I think with that understanding, he would, he would agree, sleep late, so.
Yeah, the, I know the fishing boats, and I have one, and of course, mine's not as fast as David's, but, you know, these, these bass boats, they're just gliding along the top of the water, they make hardly no wake. But it's, there's certain boats that are designed to make wakes, and it's for the, that particular activity, but...
Okay. Well, it sounds to me like we got a good, a good, what I like to see is people who sit down and talk, and talk it out, and come up with a good, positive end result. And the board's on, I'm gonna set the motion here in a minute, but I'll just state this, I think that the recreational fishermen are satisfied, I think the main channel's not impacted, and I think the homeowners are satisfied, is what I'm hearing tonight, by, by what I'm seeing, and I appreciate the input, because here again, my dad likes to fish, he's one of those dock guys, and he likes to troll right up and fish, and crappy fish. And I asked him, I asked three people after I sent you that email, just make sure that all the areas covered. He was one of them, and he said, don't approve it. And now I'm gonna go back and tell him why I approved it tonight, for myself.
On our pylon, we have lures that have washed up on the beach from the fishermen. I'm not that big of a fisherman, and they're way nicer lures than I would ever use, and we just hang them off the post. I have collected rain jackets and hung them on the post, and they just, they've gone, and I'm assuming it's the person who dropped it and flew off.
That was probably David got the...
I'm more than happy to share, I'm not, I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm not anti-fisherman.
That one thing, we was like you said, that one thing we was worried about was just the main channel, you know? That was it.
And we all votes too, like, trust me.
And in the recreational...
Oh, y'all, listen, we're out of public here now, I'm sorry, I got y'all, I engaged y'all again, that's my fault.
Sorry.
I had asked the board if we're still, and I said, yeah, we are, so, I didn't mean to engage y'all again to get conversation going, we need to, and the reason we do that is because the board is here to conduct business. And if people just commented in and out the whole meeting, you'd be here till midnight. And so, so I'm sorry, I got y'all engaged again, that was my fault. Y'all did a wonderful job with the comment already, so. Do I hear a motion? I'll be quiet. Do I hear a motion?
Madam Clerk can strike all that conversation for minutes.
Okay, got a motion to approve? There is a second. Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. That's for a vote for both the recreational fishermen tonight and for the homeowners and public safety, so there you go. All right, let's move to the next item on the agenda. This is item A, we started this item and we stopped this item. So Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir, and let's get back on this item, page 33, correct?
Yes, sir. We'll get the link fixed in a few...
Mike, can y'all carry that conversation the whole way? We'll try, we can't hear. Thank you.
And again, these are our routine items that we need board approval on, of course. That's why we're here. The first item, again, this is page 33. There's a request on the memo from a gentleman who had brought in two TVs to our public works office. You'll recall that the board instituted an electronics disposal fee maybe about six months ago, or maybe longer, where anyone bringing in a TV or computer, et cetera, has to pay a fee. This gentleman apparently was doing a public service and brought in two TVs found on the side of the road.
And the reason we charge because we get charged, right, Ashley?
Right, that's right. And so staff is not allowed to waive fees, and so he did go through the process to ask that the board waived the fees and actually refund the $20 in this case, since he did pay it. I believe he's spoken to at least one commissioner about it, and again, the name is Jerry Ritchie. And you have, and there's a, page 35 is the receipt, he was issued for paying the $20.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board concerning? Our comments, questions?
You know, there's a, I've noticed a lot of TVs on the side road at 26A, Deer Park Road, there's a ton I noticed off the side of the road the other day. So it's an issue?
Okay.
Mattress is a box for you, now it's TVs.
All right, other comments, questions? What's the pleasure of the board?
Are you asking if we wanna refund his money?
We're gonna refund him, that's what you're, that's what's asked.
I make a motion we refund his money.
Okay, got a motion, we have a second. Second. Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, and you pose a light sign. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
The next item, you have three leak adjustments. These are from the NIBO Water System. There's one from Lasting, Billings, $63 leak adjustment. You see the note from that account, there's a receipt for that leak. There's one from Subtles Enterprise for $1,167, and that is a half waiver. This is apparently a leak that happened, they have a very large meter there, and a leak that happened during one of the freezes. And so if you approve the waiver, they would still be paying a water bill of over $1,000 in this instance. And you see the letter there from the company, and then the last one is from Reynolds, and it's a $102 leak adjustment. So several of these are related to freezing that has happened.
Okay, comments, questions? So Subtles is requesting reimbursement on material spent to repair, help me out here.
No, just their bill was over, no, their bill was over $2,000 for that month, and so they're asking for a forgiveness on half of the bill, so they would still be paying over a $1,000 water bill.
For that one month.
Right.
Oh, okay.
It's a massive leak, that amount.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
There's no way to do anything else for them, just, but they're agreeing to the half.
Yes, sir.
I move we approve it.
Okay, got, second. Second, very good. Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, and you pose a light sign.
Okay, and then on page 43, you have EMS write-offs, these are, as you can see, they're either unable to find them, they're deceased without an estate, et cetera.
Well, there's nothing else we can do at this point, but go ahead and remove them and mark those off as a loss, but in saying that, I'd like to also say that maybe we need to send, have the, none else, maybe the planning board see if they can come up with a better idea on a way to, somebody needs to sit down and try to figure out a better way to...
So the way our, maybe the, I don't wanna short-circuit the idea, but the way our process will work, if someone receives a bill, Allison's gone, but, and it, they don't, they ignore it or what have you, we will send letters from, from our office. If there's no response to that, we enter what's called the debt set-off collection program, that account, and so if that person happens to have a state income tax refund, lottery winning, some other revenue that flows through the state, the state will check with anyone that's filed essentially a claim against that person to understand if there's a debtor out there. And so we will receive lottery proceeds sometimes for either tax or EMS bills. A lot of times, folks, they go through the debt set-off process without any positive results, we turn it over to a collection agency, the collection agency will do the typical processes, you know, phone calls, letters, et cetera, and then that can run through a tenure process.
I think it'd be fitting to say this here tonight, that a lot of this expense comes from people that are not even citizens here in there. And, you know, they use the EMS, and, you know, there's no way to ever collect from them.
And that's very possible and probably likely, there, if people don't have means or resources or an estate when they pass away, there's not a lot we can do for that collection process, but there's a very rigorous collection process that goes through many steps before it gets to this.
That's, that's almost $72,000 in stuff we have to write off that we can't collect.
And Ashley, remind the board, I know in times past that you, the county has had a outside firm that tried to go in and, and based upon the percentage of what they collected is what they got, do we still do that?
We still have a collection agency, and that's pretty much the last step, because we'll go through all the other means to collect 100% of outstanding bill to, like the debt set-off program or other means before it gets to the collection agency.
These bills right here, are these mainly EMS-related, Lynn?
These are all EMS transfers, so like your, there's one over $2,000, it's probably a... So like your, you know, there's one over two thousand dollars, it's probably advanced life support.
You've still got, you've still got, that's not even.
And/or bankruptcy.
About is that, you know, we're, we're a part of, but you've got hospital expenses that are not, they don't get doctors and.
And if they file bankruptcy, you know, we can't touch them either. Correct. There, I'm Mr. Wood. Okay.
Which can go.
Typically.
Okay, all right, any other comments, questions? What's the pleasure of the board?
We have no options but write it off, I make a motion, you go ahead with.
Second. Discussion, all in favor say aye. You pose like a sign, okay?
And then there are, uh, several budget amendments, starting on page forty-five. Just go through those quickly. GF fourteen, uh, makes several small transfers between line items and various departments. Uh, GF fifteen allocates funds for Florence deployments, emergency services. GF sixteen transfers funds between departments for increased workers, workers' compensation costs. That's something that we try to predict, uh, before the budget is set. And sometimes the bill's a little bit higher, as in this case. Uh, GF seventeen makes adjustments to libraries book purchase line item due to a slight reduction in state aid. Uh, GF eighteen appropriates donations at the animal shelter. And that's a definite positive, we're receiving donations for, uh, different uses at that facility.
Okay, what's the pleasure, comments, questions? What's the pleasure of the board?
Move we approve as presented.
Got a motion, you have a second? Second, discussion, all in favor of the motion say aye. You pose like a sign. Okay, Mr. Wood?
Uh, would you like to go back to courthouse project?
Okay, that's good item D, uh, under old business, the courthouse project update. You're right, head, sir.
That's page twenty-seven. Uh, so several months ago, you, you had a request from the district attorney's office, uh, related to their, uh, home in the courthouse. Again, currently that function is on the third floor, uh, accessible by a stairwell. Say on the south side of the courthouse. If you're looking at the courthouse, it's on the right-hand, uh, side of the courthouse. There's been discussion, uh, in this room, uh, about, publicly about, um, relocating a registered deeds office, which has happened to make room for, uh, the district attorney's office, to, uh, get that, uh, office in a more accessible location, uh, to create additional space needed for, for that staff. Uh, so that's been the plan for quite a while, to move into the former registered deeds space. In the meantime, there's been a discussion and requests from that office to make available the former law library on the third floor. Uh, I believe every, uh, board member has seen that space. Uh, the law library, uh, functioned for many years in various locations in the courthouse, uh, where local members of the bar association, uh, were made available, uh, law books, and they could go and do research. Uh, the internet has eliminated the need for a law library. Uh, the space, uh, has honestly not been utilized in probably about ten years. And so we're in the process of, um, uh, removing the books, uh, from that space. And so the district attorney has requested that that space be made available, uh, for their usage as well. And so, uh, staff did ask the architect and the contractor to, uh, provide a cost of what a renovation would be for the first floor level that we've talked about, where registered deeds used to be, as well as the third, uh, floor, uh, section that used to be the law library. And so that took a few months to process. You've got an estimate from, uh, Mr. De Poister on page twenty-eight, uh, that was about a hundred fifty thousand from the architect. And so that went through all the, uh, the quotes and so forth with the contractor subcontractor. And so the proposal that came back, uh, signed by the contractor, uh, proposal is a hundred eighty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And that would do the first floor work and the third floor work, uh, for the district attorney. So at this point, uh, it's up to the board, if you want to do first and third floor, uh, that would be the cost. I don't have a separate price, if you just wanted to do the first floor, um, if that was your desire, we would have to go back to the contractor and get different pricing. So again, this one eighty-three and change is first and third floor for that function. Any questions?
And that's got the courthouse completed, right? With the windows changed, with the, uh, remodel on the, when you go in the main level, um, minus the space that's created, uh, on two P.
One P.
One P, the open space that would be left there that, that.
For future use.
For future. Okay, other comments, questions?
I'm assuming that this estimate does not include any furniture.
This is not, this is just renovation. This is not furnishing.
We're, are we coming, aren't we coming in just a little bit lower on what we, uh, we were at on the cost?
There, uh, there's a contingency built into the contractor's bid price of about two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. There's some, uh, question with the architect that's outstanding, whether or not this money could come out of that, or if the contractor, uh, believes that is for, you know, cost overruns on concrete and drywall or whatever else. So it's hard to necessarily imagine that many change orders for cost overruns, et cetera. We have seen some change orders come through.
Come out of that contingency.
That would definitely be the preference from, from staff first.
Well, you might as well do that because you, you're gonna pay for it either way. And you're hoping that it'd be less if you use your contingency fund first, right?
Yes, sir.
Because you don't want to do a fund bound, I guess you would recommend it coming out of, that, that work would have to be done paid before the new budget would kick in, correct?
Probably, we did talk to the contractor about timing, and their preference for the entire structure is to start on the uppermost floor, the third floor, and do all the work there and work their way down.
So as not to mess up what they just done, correct?
That's right. So otherwise, it could wait until right at the end of the project. They would like to start on this as soon as they can.
Okay, other comments, questions? There being, what's the pleasure of the board?
Well, you know, I said what I'd like to see happen, uh, you know, there's really no way of knowing that we can, because these won't get started on it before the, the rest of it's finished. But, uh, I really, uh, believe that, you know, we need to stress the fact to, to the contractor that we really would like to see this work out of the whole, out of that same fund. I make a motion, go, go ahead with it.
I got a motion, you have a second? Second, discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, and you pose like a sign. Okay, I'm Mr. Wood. Any other courthouse updates?
Uh, no, sir. Well, sort of related, uh, we'll mention, uh, the courthouse lawn. We've had a, obviously tough time with the weather lately. And so with the charters of freedom settings, uh, we'd gotten underway and then, uh, tremendous amount of rain and snow and everything else in between. So I did talk to Mr. De Poister this afternoon. Uh, we do have the settings on hand, and, uh, we're waiting, uh, to coordinate with the charters of freedom, uh, volunteers, I guess, and our contractor, a date hopefully very soon to get those placed. Weather's just not been cooperating lately, but hopefully very soon those will be placed.
Okay, all right, let's move to item B, under new business, this would be the, uh, tax matters. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Sort of similar, uh, again, uh, the first page, there are some past ten-year statute of limitations for some write-offs, a much smaller amount here, five hundred and seventy dollars and ninety-three cents. And then the rest are typical, uh, refunds, releases, et cetera, and discoveries, um, from our tax departments.
Okay, you've had a chance to look at those, what's the pleasure of the board? Comments, questions? What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, you have a second? Second, discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, and you pose like a sign. Okay, um, Mr. Wood, let's go to item C, new business pilot plant discussion?
Right, so, um, several of you were on the board, uh, when the Foothills Pilot Plant, uh, was established. Uh, it opened in twenty-eleven, uh, the, I think the ribbon cutting, I think, was in twenty-twelve, uh, about seven years ago. That facility, uh, was essentially set up by the county on county property, uh, with the goal of it being set up under a nonprofit and sort of set on its own to, you know, flourish or do whatever. And unfortunately, after about five years, um, the folks made a great effort to keep it sustained, but it's just very hard to keep it going. And so it did shut down around October of twenty-seventeen. Um, there were some interested parties that had, had been in communication with county staff, uh, that they would like to, would have liked to have tried to get, uh, you know, capital, uh, to restart the operation, uh, to get some new staffing there, to get that going. And so honestly, I would, uh, reach out to them every couple of weeks, uh, or maybe not that frequently, maybe every two months and say, you know, how's it going? Is there anything, you know, we can help you, uh, do or whatever? And, um, we're still working on it, uh, so forth. And so right around Thanksgiving, I did, uh, ask for an update. And that, and that group indicated that they were just unable to get capital, unable to find in, individuals, uh, that could really just take it on and proceed. So I mentioned to several of you that, um, you know, it's essentially been mothballed for a little over a year. Uh, and we honestly need some direction, uh, staff to understand what the board would like to do with the facility. Um, and so that's why we're here. Uh, the folks gave it a go, uh, with the operation and then trying to get it back going. And it's not evident that, um, there's anyone that will step up and do it.
What will it take to clean the place up and put somebody in that building?
So, uh, I did go through the, the chair and vice chair Friday with Mr. De Poister. Uh, others, uh, Mr. McPeters may have been in before as well. There's a very small portion of that facility that was built, uh, for very small office, two offices.
Kitchenette.
Kitchenette and restroom, and that's about it. The rest of the facility was built like a chicken processing plant. And so it has, uh, you know, walls that can be washed or insulated. Uh, there's no heating and cooling, et cetera, in that space. And so it's, you know, less than a third is, less than a quarter maybe, is, uh, finished essentially. Uh, the rest, uh, would need some work for occupation for, for people on a regular basis. Uh, it needs a good cleaning, uh, that was very evident there on Friday. It was well-used, I will say, in the five years, so it will definitely need to be cleaned. There is a question about the processing equipment that is in there. Um, and we're, uh, discussing that with the county attorney. Uh, it's essentially abandoned personal property at this point, since it belonged to a separate entity, but we want to be clear about that. But there is processing equipment in there that would have to be dealt with in some manner. But it would take some, uh, some effort to clean it. And then if there's an intent to use it for something other than its original purpose, uh, there would need to be, um, an evaluation by an architect on what that would mean. It's about thirty-one hundred square feet. So.
But to answer your question, uh, you might look at, uh, the guys across the road, um, soil and.
Soil and water.
There, there's some interest there with the shed part for storage of equipment that's being stored down at the, uh, universal site, is that correct?
That's right.
Or.
They're in about three different buildings.
It can be modified and, and fitted for.
I think it'd be worth more to us that way.
Yeah. That way frees up space.
And that's why it's the question, what's it gonna take to put somebody in it?
Yeah, stat, uh, we need more information, Ashley. And, and you guys, uh, man needs to get down on site, check that building out and bury, bury some of it in, but you probably need to walk through.
I think personally, I think at this point, we just need to see, uh, see, you know, be getting some numbers on what it would cost to clean it up, clean it out, and maybe tear some of the petitions dividers out of it, open it up and then, uh, go from there on it, would be my suggestion.
Yeah. Mention, if it's okay, uh, chair and vice chair were there Friday. Maybe a first step from a legal perspective is for staff to go through, whether after it's cleaned or before, uh, whatever's prudent, and just catalog the equipment and, you know, deal with that separate from the building. We can be doing that.
Yeah, we need to do an inventory on what's out there.
And go from there.
And, and I did get a call today, I was closest to the board, from the, uh, assistant, uh, forest ranger, and the, Chris, Chris was with him too, and they said they talked to Mr. Wood today, I believe, also. They had, uh, interest in the, uh, owning for, uh, equipment coverage. And I said, well, we'll put your name in the pot. We don't know what we're gonna do with the building yet, and, but we'll duly note that for the record and, and make sure that the whole board knows you made a request. They could be considering in the future as we go forward.
Right now, if, if anything, soil and water would, would need it for the equipment.
Yep. Okay, um, there's an update and discussion. Let's move to item D, uh, under new business, this is, uh, offers on three county tracts of land, uh, county-owned property. Mr. Wood, go ahead, please, sir.
This is page ninety-three, if the, the link isn't working for you. So these are, uh, we're starting to see some interest, and there's been some discussion lately about, uh, surplus county land. And there will be next month, I believe, as well. But, uh, we had been listing on our county website several tracts of land for honestly several years now. One we've talked about was the, the land out of the Lake James. And we've been very clear about what the board's minimum is in that area. Uh, but one of the, uh, groupings of lots that we have are in the, the failed development called Wild ridges. Now it was, um, around Rock House Road, um, I guess kind of the southwestern portion of the county. Uh, I think most are familiar with that development. Uh, we have a total of four lots in that development, um, due to, uh, a failed tax foreclosure sale essentially that, um, prior tax collector proceeded with. There were no bidders. And so when there's no bidders, uh, the county, uh, in this case, becomes the owner. And so, uh, as you can see there, um, there's three lots that someone made an offer for. There's a fourth one that there's, uh, some offers for that we'll maybe deal with next month. And so typically, and I mentioned this in greater detail with the chairman, typically if someone offered five hundred dollars for, uh, county property, uh, we usually wouldn't come to this point. It would say, no, that's too low. But in this instance, uh, these lots are in, um, in this development that does have a homeowners association. Uh, you, you see the letter, uh, or email from, uh, Chris McLaughlin, uh, who's with the school of government. Uh, he's indicated that, uh, local governments are not exempt from paying homeowners association dues unless there is some other exception. And so there is a possibility of these lots at some point either being charged dues or assessments.
They go in, just figure the cost to pay, guttering, all that, and tell every, uh, owner of each of the lots in there, here's your share, pay it, or we'll see you in court. That's the long story.
Just like any, you know, any of the developments these folks were, are from, I could.
So that's why it's our advantage to go ahead, and it's already been through the, the big process?
Yes, sir, so these three lots.
The sales are final, right?
They would be if you approved, and so it is a low amount for, for land, but they have no value to us. There's a lot of staff, time, and effort.
They're a big liability to us. Big time.
We would recommend just.
That's your recommendation? What's the pleasure of the board, hear a motion?
Move we sell.
Okay, motion, you have a second? Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, and you pose like a sign. Okay, thank you, Jim. Let's move to item E, um, under, uh, new business, this is a resolu- resolution for establishing review officers. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Right, this is pretty straightforward. So the tax office requires, is required to have review officers for map law changes. And we try to stay on top of whenever, uh, there are changes. and we try to stay on top of whenever there are changes in our tax department. A couple of years ago, we started incorporating city staff in this process so they can review changes for inside the city limits. So if someone brought in a map that would change inside the city, the city staff would do that, since they have a subdivision ordinance that covers the city of Marion. And so you've got a resolution before you and recommend approval.
Okay, what's pleasure, comments, questions? What's pleasure of the board?
Make a motion, we approve, ready, first.
Okay, second, the discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, you opposed last time. Let's move to item F, under the new business. This is a request to purchase a garbage truck, and we need one, don't we, Mr. Wooten?
We do.
All right, go ahead, let's say out.
Start out the year with an understatement. So quickly, our public works department, which oversees our solid waste collection, has a fleet of two garbage trucks, traditional garbage trucks, and one roll-off container truck. And so the roll-off container truck is essentially brand-new. It's just essentially the truck chassis with a hoist in the back, and those pick up the large roll-off containers. But typical dumpsters are picked up by our garbage truck fleet. Our newest truck is from 2014, and it has 180,000 miles on it already.
And that serves as all the landfills externally, and who else?
So we get the schools, we get some county buildings, and so there's a tremendous amount mileage that goes on these trucks. And honestly, I think there was an attempt by the department to try to get through this year without another large expenditure, but it just can't be avoided.
You're going to do payment in arrears anyway, pay for next budget year, and you need it.
We do.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Move we go get a garbage truck.
Got a motion, we have a second. Second discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, you opposed last time. Okay. Let's go to system comment. Do we have anybody here that wishes to speak tonight? If you do, just come on up, write your name down. All right, at this time, let's go to, we've got, cover system comment. Are there any commissioners, reports, communications for staff? We've got the Registered Deeds dedication next Tuesday, January 22nd, correct?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, so excuse me, tomorrow.
Snuck up on us.
Well, I'm glad you told me. Well, Cherry would have called me, she's good. She would, she'll call us out.
On all of us.
All right, so tomorrow, so that's a good...
What time is that?
11:00 a.m.
Okay. All right, looking forward to that. Anything else anybody has?
Two other items for this essentially long weekend coming up. You have an invite from the rescue squad for the Saturday at 1:00 p.m. for their 60th anniversary there at the facility on State Street. And you also received an invite from Addys Chapel for the annual Martin Luther King Day service on Monday at 11:00 a.m. at the church.
All right, any other reports, communications by staff?
County facilities will be closed on Monday for the holiday.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Closed, that means you can't take your trash on Monday, right?
Get those garbage trucks a break.
Now, we've got everything covered. There here, motion adjourned.
Move.
Motion, second, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye.